Good evening, everyone. Let me go ahead and call this meeting to order. It is exactly 5:36 PM. I'm going to go ahead and start by roll call, making sure that we do or do not have quorum. Starting to my right, if you could just indicate who you are.
Hello. Jessica Troy. Present.
Carlos Margot, present.
Anita Chavez, present.
Alisa Benia, present.
Tosalo Hernandez, present.
Celso Gomez Jr., present.
Thank you. We have everyone here. We have quorum. Thank you for that. If I may now ask everyone to please stand and let's do the pledge of allegiance. Ladies and gentlemen, please face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. Thank you all for being here this evening. Next on the agenda is item number four, which is public comment. Each speaker, again, remind everyone that we do have three minutes. Anita Chavez, to my right, our vice president, will indicate to you after your three minutes are up that we ask that you seize, and at a later time, you're certainly welcome to provide remarks at a later date. Taking the names today, I don't know how many we have, will be our secretary. If you could go ahead and let us know who to call up and how many we have.
We have one public speaker today, and we'll have Ms. Vanessa Brown make your way to the podium, please.
Ms. Brown? Nice to see you again.
Good evening. My name is Vanessa Brown, and I am representing the La Jolla Association of Texas Professional Educators and its members to confirm our organization's stand on the transactions and transformations that have begun in our district since February. These changes have not only been necessary, but also transformative steps towards improving student performance, balancing the budget, and promoting transparency. First and foremost, the initiatives aimed at enhancing student performance are commendable. Our students are our future and our number-one priority, and providing them with a robust, high-quality education is paramount. The focus on innovative teaching methods, updated curriculum, and additional resources for both teachers and students will undoubtedly foster a more engaging environment for our students. The measures taken to balance the budget, which will be discussed tonight, demonstrate responsible and strategic financial management. While it is devastating that employees have lost their jobs as part of these efforts, such difficult decisions were necessary for the long-term financial health of our district. Without change, the district would have continued into an unsustainable future. By addressing these challenges head-on, you are ensuring that our district remains financially stable and sustained. This approach allows you to allocate resources more effectively, ensuring that every dollar spent directly benefits our students. It is crucial, and I commend the board and the superintendent, along with the central office staff, for their diligence in this area. Moreover, the efforts to promote transparency within the district are a significant step forward that our organization has been asking for for years. Open communication and transparency build trust between the board, educators, parents, and the community. By making information readily available and involving stakeholders in the process, you are fostering a collaborative environment, enhancing accountability, and strengthening the partnerships between the district and the community it serves. Difficult and timely information has come directly from the superintendent, who has not only embraced the role, but our districts, our students, and our community as her number-one priority. By focusing on student performance, financial stability, and transparency, the district leadership is laying a strong foundation for future success. We are confident that these efforts will yield positive outcomes. On behalf of the La Jolla Association of Texas Professional Educators, we thank Dr. Sorenson and the board for your dedication, resilience, hard work, and perseverance in making these necessary changes, and offer our continued support as partners in continuing the district's move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Thank you to my board members, Ms. Benia, Ms. Chavez. Next on the agenda, I see we have no more speakers. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Great. Next on the agenda is agenda item number five. The following item is the agenda notice of public meeting to discuss the 2024-2025 budget and the 2024 proposed tax rate, presented by Mr. and Ms. Camilo Lopez and Ms. Crespo and Dr. Sorenson. Good afternoon, or good evening, I should say.
So, good afternoon, Mr. Board President Alvariz, ladies and gentlemen of the board, Dr. Sorenson, and community members. We are here to propose a budget and actually adopt the budget. So, again, to remind everybody, this is a two-step process, right? So, today, we are actually proposing and adopting the budget only. And as we walk down some of these slides, I want to emphasize that we are assuming a $20,009.7 in average daily attendance, and that encompasses traditional ADA of the optional flexible school day program and the half ADA for pre-K program. We're also assuming a .7869 MNO tax rate. We are currently assuming an interest and second rate of .2664, and the .7869 assumes the disaster pennies. We're also assuming that there were no increase in premiums for employees, a premium in the self-funded health insurance plan, and no increase in the employer contribution. We're also assuming $3.4 billion in property values for our tax collections. Okay, as I mentioned earlier, we're assuming that $20,009.7 in ADA. So, as you guys can see from this graph, the overall trend is downward. In the short term, it looks like it's going to flatten out, but the overall trend is downward. We're already making plans to, in July, to meet, to try to shorten the gap or reduce the gap between enrollment and average daily attendance. We want to emphasize that we might look at, dig a little bit deeper into the optional flexible school day program to kind of tighten that gap. So, this slide pretty much sums up the whole night. So, the, as you guys can see, on the general fund, we're assuming a 10.4 use of fund balance to bounce off the budget, and the primary drivers for that 10.4 are the fact that we are helping out $12.2 million on the special education fund, and we're also helping out the health insurance fund with $6.7 million. Any questions on that slide?
You may proceed. No questions from the board.
The next slide just pretty much cut up all the information, the different views. We're looking at the governmental funds only, and the takeaway here is that, right now, on the revenue standpoint, we pretty much have all our revenues from the state funding from the actual FSP formula. We get 71% from the state and 11.7% from local taxes. So, at the end of the day, the revenue formula is what actually brings us the most revenue. On the actual expenses, we can see that on the 53% and the 17% in actual, that's how much we actually put into the actual students with instruction, and that's the investment that we actually place in the classroom. There's the 53% for the function 11, the function 10, sorry, and the other 17% of $58 million. So, when we look at the actual expenses, we have the biggest driver being payroll costs. So, right now, we are seeing a total of 69% of our expenses going to payroll costs. So, at the end of the day, again, our biggest driver in revenue is coming from the state. Our biggest expenses are coming from the payroll side, and also, we are actually investing back into the kids, as usual.
Can you do the slides, because I don't have the clicker?
Oh.
No, I can talk through them, but as long as you drive. Thanks, sir. And again, I will just take over the last couple of slides, and again, I just wanted to put this in front of the public and the board, just to remind you where we were and the journey that we've taken since 2011, and again, that we've been, again, I've repeated this since February, that, again, the district has been told since 2011 that they've been overstaffed, and as we looked in the 23-24 school year, and when we got deep into the budget season, we were facing an approximate $55.3 million deficit due to the addition of Essar funding. That was used to close the budget gap and in position control issues, and due to the hard work of a lot of people, we are now at the place that we are in terms of presenting the budget that we are to this board. We engaged in new budgeting processes and protocols that kept schools and students at the center of the budgeting process. We were very clear from the very beginning that we were going to do everything possible to keep students and schools at the center and keep our cuts away from the classroom. We wanted to empower principals to drive campus decisions. We were going to align ourselves with TASB guidelines and best practices. We were going to be transparent around budgeting shortfalls and realities, not only with our stakeholders, but throughout the community, and we were going to talk consistently about academic return on investment and use that as a framework to make decision-making, and that was a revamped budget process. And so, again, putting this in front of the public and the board, and the $28.4 million in position control cleanup, the $26.9 million in salaries on temporary Essar funding, left us with a $55.3 million potential budget shortfall. And so, we are standing before the board today. Next slide. With overall reductions of $44.9 million, this would include disaster pennies and temporary tax rate adjustment, including 395 positions transferred back to the general fund, so we were able to save 395 positions, and that includes final Essar resources encumbered for materials and capital projects. So, we're asking the board today to pass the next-year budget with a $10.4 million deficit. This is back to you, sir.
Yes. So, next steps in the process, in late July, we're going to certify values from the local property value, the CAD, local CAD, and then, once we have those values, we'll present them to TEA, and based on the growth that we see, they'll establish MCR for us, and that'll help us actually create the tax rate. Then, we go back and reevaluate our INS rate and see if the rate that we're going to levy is enough to actually make our payments. And then, in September, we'll come back and we'll do another notice with the appropriate tax rate, and we'll come back with a resolution to actually adopt a tax rate in September. And as far as other things that we have to do, we've actually updated our website with the tax rate calculation worksheet that is on the actual website right now, and once we actually run through this process in September, we'll actually update that information with the true numbers.
Don't move yet. Don't go to the next slide. Okay. So, are there any questions from the board?
Members, do we have any questions for Mr. Lopez, Ms. Crespo? Dr. Sorenson?
Okay. So, we have an announcement. We said that at the next board meeting, we would share with the public and our stakeholders that we had a bit of great news. So, can we go to the next slide? We would like to announce that for all employees to be paid on August 30th, 2024, if the board will allow, as a part of our compensation plan, we would like to offer all of our employees, with the exception of cabinet members, a $1,000 retention stipend. So, we are announcing this this evening. If the board approves, a $1,000 retention stipend for all employees, with the exception of cabinet, to be paid on August 30th, 2024. This will include all of our staff members across La Jolla ISD. So, we are very excited to offer this for our employees. They deserve it. They are so hardworking. They are exceptional employees in this district, and so, we are very excited to offer this opportunity, and we look forward for the board to potentially, you know, grant this opportunity to our employees. I know the board, as we have discussed this potential before, is also full of excitement and joy that we can offer this opportunity, but we want to just be able to show our gratitude, knowing that we couldn't offer a raise, but we wanted to show our gratitude and our appreciation in any way that we could, as we know that they deserve more. We wish we could do more, and we hope that we could do more in the future, and so, we are looking to provide gratitude in this way to every single employee, again, with the exception of cabinet. So, we will close the budget presentation at this point, if the board does not have any further questions for us.
Do any of the board members have any questions or any remarks that they'd like to make at this time? Dr. Sorenson, I want to thank you and your team for allowing this to be possible for our staff. The $1,000, it's certainly something that you have been talking about for a long time, and we're excited that you made the announcement tonight. So, a round of applause to not only you, but also to your members of your team that made this possible. Any other members of the board like to make any comments at this time? Seeing that we have none, does anyone have any, I guess here, I'm opening it up for any questions from the public regarding our budget? Selena, am I appropriate by saying that?
Um...
Do we have any comments? I don't think we had anybody that signed up, or do they need to sign up for it?
I think, yeah, the opportunity to sign up, but if there's anybody who wants to sign up or come forward.
Does anyone have any comments regarding the budget report that was just in? Seeing that we have none, we can go ahead and move. Thank you. Dr. Sorenson, of course, Ms. Crespo, and of course, Mr. Lopez, thank you very much for your presentation. Next item on the agenda is the superintendent's updates and announcements.
Yes. I am so excited. I have been looking forward to this day for a long time. So, I am super excited to talk about district reorganization overview. Blanca, so if you could forward slides for me. I am so excited to talk about the organizational review update, not only talking about what the last five months has taught us, and it has taught me so much, but I want to, I have been saying all along, the entire time I've been here, that I promise, I promise, I promise, I promise, that I will share a report out in full with all stakeholders in June. And so, I'm now going to share the report out, but I'm also going to share org charts, and I'm going to show who's in what position and who sits in what seat, and not for the entire organization. There's lots of positions that are not going to show up in an org chart, but I am super excited to not only share what I learned across this past five months, but also unveil an org chart, as well as who is going to be helping me lead this district. So, this report development process provides additional support to the 90-day entry plan, which I talked a lot about, but it also provides us an opportunity. And I want to say this with all sincerity. What we together as a district, what we together as a district have been able to accomplish in five months is incredible. It's something that districts, and I think somebody said to me, some districts tinker around the edges of this work for years. So, what we have been able to accomplish together, and I do say together, because the stakeholder input, as I did town halls and school visits and listening sessions with parents and students and teachers and coaches and principals and assistant principals and transportation and facilities and custodial workers and bus drivers and on and on and on, over the past five months, it's just been incredible. And so, you guys will see, and when I say you guys, I mean everybody, you'll see your voices reflected in this report, and it really provides us an opportunity to become a more effective organization, and so, I hope that you see your voice in this report. Next slide. So, again, what this evaluation was really based upon was stakeholder feedback, observation, document review. So, some of you may have seen people going around the district with me. Blanca was one of the people who came to many stakeholder engagements with me. People were like, "What is Blanca doing here?" And I was like, "Taking notes." We gathered a ton of data, both qualitative and quantitative data, and we benchmarked against best practices, research. Wasn't just, you know, Dr. Sorenson sitting in an office and cooking up the very best ways, but there was a lot of research behind it. What's working across the nation? What's working in the most effective, high-performing districts across the country? And let's benchmark ourselves against them, and let's organize ourselves in a way that high-performing districts are organized. And so, that's our approach, as we look at ourselves as a district, and how do we want to function, and how do we want to organize ourselves so that we are serving students first, and that every decision that we make comes down to kids, and that every dollar we spend is about kids, and supporting our adults, and supporting our students, and about supporting families. So, that's what we did over the past five months. So, let's talk about organizational structure and central office administration. So, the research says a couple of things, and I'm really going to just, there's a lot of words on the slides, and I'll have it there for people to read, but the research is really clear, and I'm going to talk about the one and two. Central office is really here to do two things. Central office is here to focus on areas where it is positioned or qualified to add value. Our job is not to do the jobs of the schools. The school does a really good job of doing school. Central office is not here to do the job of the school. Their proximity to students is closer than central office, and so, interventions of schools work best as interventions with students. So, what central office needs to do are the things that they are uniquely positioned to or qualified where they should add value. The other thing that central office should do are areas that are difficult or challenging for schools to manage for themselves, such as transportation, such as custodial services, such as large-scale professional development, right? Instructional improvement across a district, right? There are areas that central office is better at doing than an individual school, and those are the things that central office should focus on, and there are things, then, that schools should focus on. And so, we have to get really clear on role clarity, and I said that throughout my five months, role clarity. So, we'll start talking a bit more about what is the school designed to do and what is central office designed to do as we continue to move forward. So, what did we find? That there were morale issues and that we talked a lot about clienteleism, right? And so, here are some quotes that we heard along the way, and I won't read them all, but here's a few, right? "Fairness, transparency, and a genuine consideration of our qualifications and dedication are crucial. We need leaders who are not only qualified, but also passionate and committed to our district's success. We need leaders who care about our growth." That came from the mouth of an assistant principal. "We heard from a facilities department staff, the administration is not being supportive. Fairness in the department and support is not there. There is just so much retaliation happening. People really fear for their jobs." People said this to us when we were out in the field, right? And on and on and on. So, there were morale issues as we were out in the field, and these are just examples. Also, strategic alignment and structure, right? There was a strategic scorecard, there was a strategic plan that was here, but it lacked very specific metrics for benchmarking progress. How did we know that we were moving forward? One principal shared about efficiency and redundancy, that in order for me to get things done, I have to drop a name. That's just not how it should be. Otherwise, things just don't get done. Like, these things were said to us as we were out in the field. And so, again, next slide. What did we do? So, what were the action steps around that? We created a strategically-aligned org chart. We fostered transparency and updated district decision-making. And so, again, sitting right here with us in the audience, we hired a board coach to ensure that we focus on governance, right? We developed policy to ensure ethical and streamlined hiring practices. We prohibit district employees from holding elected office, right? We completed a rigorous 90-day entry plan where there was transparency at every step as to where I was, what I was doing, and what I was accomplishing, each step along the way. We included reducing redundancy and aligned roles with strategic priorities in this current budget. So, what will we continue to do? Foster a culture of customer service. That is going to be a pillar of our work next year, creating a culture of customer service. You're going to see me say this over and over as we go into next year. We are going to become a customer-service-focused entity, right? We're going to continue promoting transparency within employee evaluations, right? We're going to talk about how people get promoted. We're going to be clear with mediation processes and grievance processes. Things will be done in timely expectations and in a timely manner. All of that is going to be continued opportunities, and we're going to get better at it every single step of the way. Next. So, I wanted to show you the first iteration of our organizational chart, and what you will see is the superintendent, and the chief of police is my direct report. Hi, chief. And you've got chief of staff. And then, under there, you see also my direct reports, the chief of academics and school leadership, which I will introduce you to shortly, chief of student family and community engagement, chief of business, finance, and administrative services, chief of human capital and talent development, and the chief of operations and infrastructure, and you see each of those as a through line, and those are the entities that will exist within central office. It is a streamlined, organized org chart in how central office will function. Each one of those departments will report directly to me and will be accountable for a customer-service-focused, accountable office that is here to serve the community, that is here to serve our students, and is here to support student outcomes. Period. Right? This is research and evidence-based. It streamlines operations. It ensures role clarity. Talked a lot about role clarity over these past five months. It introduces transparency, and it reinforces our unrelenting focus on student and campus success. Next slide. Then, we talk about school and student support. Again, here's the research, and I want to ground ourselves always in excellence. In my 90-day plan, I lifted up the word excellence over and over and over again. When we talk about leadership, climate and culture, and engagement, and cross-functional work, at the underbelly of all of that is excellence. I expect everyone to show up every day doing their very best, but I also expect us to show up in classrooms and on campuses doing our very best, which is why we've shifted to high-quality instructional materials, which is why we will have a streamlined assessment system, which is why we're implementing and really lifting up early learning and really focusing on dual language and making sure that our kids are prepared for post-secondary careers. Next slide. And so, again, lifting up our principals, really investing in executive directors of school leadership, and focusing on developing the capacity of our principals to truly become the CEOs of their building, creating an office of assessment, accountability, and school quality, so that data becomes the friend of not only our teachers, but our principals, so that it becomes usable, not just for compliance. It becomes the way that we modify our practices so that we continue to grow, not just comply. Next. So, again... So again, what we heard, and I don't wanna sit on the bag, but I do want people to see that we heard you. We heard you. We heard about a lack of principal support. We heard about inefficient data management processes. We heard about an overemphasis on compliance. And we heard about culture and climate opportunities that were missed. And we heard from, and again, if you go back to that slide just for one second, please notice, there are teacher voices on here, there are principal voices on here, there are parent voices on here, and there are student voices on here. We heard from stakeholders across the district. Next slide. So again, action steps in five months, five months. We enhance support for school leaders. We have new academics and school leadership department that will be led by one chief of academics and school leadership. We will have three new executive directors that will serve as principal supervisors. And we will have clarity around assistant principal roles, and they will be instructional leaders. Our assistant principals will be instructional leaders. We are advancing instructional quality. We have increased the stipend for teacher professional development. While there was lots of conversation about what we did for stipends in terms of athletics and fine arts, there was not merely the hooray for the increased professional development stipend and the focus on how we value teacher professional development, right? We need to talk about the implementation of high-quality instructional materials and what that's gonna do for our educators, but most importantly, what that's gonna do for our students. And we also need to really celebrate, and we'll meet her in a minute, the establishment of a comprehensive department focused on how we use data and how we really study ourselves and how effective or not effective we're being as a district. And then we are gonna have a ton of continued opportunities to be transparent and public-facing around how we're doing as a district to continue to improve, right? Creating cycles of continuous improvement. And that's what we're gonna do as a district. We're always gonna be asking, how are we serving our students best? How are we lifting up our employees to make sure that they feel as supportive, supported, and prepared to do what we're asking them to do? How are we empowering our principals to do what we're asking them to do? That is what Central Office is charged with doing. Next slide. So again, giving examples of our organizational chart for 2425, you will see side-by-side models of the chief of academics and school leadership having two deputy chiefs, a deputy chief of academics, which again, you will meet very shortly, but I think you know him, who will oversee all of the academic departments, all under the umbrella of academics. Then you will see the deputy chief of school leadership, who will oversee the executive directors of school leadership, and the executive director of assessment, accountability, and school quality. Again, streamlining coherence, accountability, responsibility, but underneath that, service. Service to our campuses, service to schools, service to our educators, service to family, but in service of student achievement. Next. And section three, effective and inclusive resource management. Again, best practices around student-centered budgeting and allocation, academic return on investment, and most importantly, Mr. Lopez, building budgets together, cross-functionally, across departments. That's what we're gonna do together as we head into this school year. Next slide. So what we found is a lack of budget collaboration. When budget season came, what we found is that teams didn't talk, right? One department owned most of the budgeting process, and the other team just did what they were told. We found a lack of student-centered resource management. We prioritized what was important to the adults. And we found imprudent financial practices. We kept getting advice based upon where we were financially, and we kept not taking that advice. Next. And so again, we want people to see that they were heard. And without lamenting the slide, we're gonna make this presentation posted on the website so that people can see, but here are quotes from our journey over the past five months around lack of student-centered resource management, lack of budget collaboration, and imprudent financial practices. Next slide. So action steps again, and I think I talked about it during the budget process, is that student-centered budgeting and stakeholder engagement was really a part of this entire process. Academic return on investment and that framework was truly a part of how we made decisions. And there are some examples here, and our commitment to fiscal responsibility by conducting zero-based budgeting exercise. And we will continue to get better at that as we move into next year. Mirjette also had talked about really leaning into efficiencies quite quickly, and we will meet Ms. Crespo shortly. And we will discontinue the practice of funding permanent positions with grant dollars. Next. So again, we will lean very heavily into the academic return on investment framework moving forward. And being very transparent, if things aren't working, we will discontinue them. We cannot continue to fund things that are not working. And we will continue to lean into driving student outcomes, addressing role clarity, aligning with research and best practice, finding efficiencies and cost savings, and eliminating redundancies and duplications. But again, at the end of all of those words, the data will tell us if things are working. And if they are not working, we have to ask ourselves why, and we have to keep peeling back all the layers of the onion. And if it's not working, we just can't continue to do the same thing over and over and over again. We will have to discontinue practices that aren't working. That's what effective organizations do. And that's what the academic return on investment framework will do for us. So what are we committed to? We're committed to keeping student needs at the very center of our decision-making processes. I commit that to you, to every child, and to every family in La Jolla ISD. If you have had an opportunity to engage with me over these past five months, you know that. You know that. We will continue to seek your input. Every single time you have something to say, there is somebody to listen. And that is what Central Office is here to do. And we will prioritize fairness and transparency in our communication patterns to rebuild trust, to rebuild partnership, and to rebrand Central Office. That is our commitment to this community. So with that being said, next slide. I am super excited, Blanca. Next slide. Moving forward. Here is the full organizational chart. And again, this will all be posted, so you can take pictures if you want, but it'll all be posted. Here is the organizational chart, high level, of cabinet. And this is what I call cabinet. This is chief of academics and leadership, deputy chief, deputy chief of school leadership, next, deputy chief of academics. And you see under this slide, you've got instructional improvement and HQIM implementation, executive director of K-12 humanities, executive director of K-12 math and science, executive director of academic enrichment, executive director of early learning, which I am super excited about. We're gonna focus on the littles, yes, we are. Executive director of bilingual and migrant education, and executive director of special education and specialized support. Chief of operations and infrastructure. Right here, we have director of district operations and campus maintenance. And you see under here, administrator of asset management, and all of the assets and warehouse and everything that used to be over in business and finance is now over in operations, where it should have been. Director of transportation, director of energy management, which is a new position for us, and you'll meet him shortly. Director of child nutrition services and director of custodial services. We will also introduce you to our new chief of operations and infrastructure very shortly as well. Chief of business, finance, and administrative services, and you will meet her shortly. We've got our executive director of budget and finance, who you all have met already, Mr. Jaime Lopez, director of grants development, director of state and federal programs, assistant director of purchasing, and director of risk management. Chief of human capital and talent development. Talent development is a new edge of growth for us. We have had human resources, but we haven't talked a lot about the talent development side. How are we growing our people? How are we really leaning into pipeline work? How are we making sure that we are lifting people up and growing them, right? Who's our bench? How are we talking about TIA work? How are we talking about compensation? How are we talking about employee wellness and taking care of our employees? So that we will have an assistant superintendent of talent and strategic compensation, and we also have a deputy chief of human capital and talent management, and you will meet them both. And then there are two executive directors of compliance and talent management and executive director of employee services and talent development. And then chief of staff, who will oversee director of communications and public relations, and you will meet her shortly as well. And then I have chief of police, and I think we all know exactly who he is, but he's here, and his org chart as well. And now I would like to introduce you to cabinet members and new members to the team. So starting off, Blanca, would you like to do these honors, or would you like me to do it? Starting off, I believe everyone has already met him, but I will reintroduce him as Mr. Joseph Nigella, chief of staff. Then we have Dr. Sarah Capwell-Giri, who is the chief of operations and infrastructure. Next slide. We have Mirjette Crespo, chief business, finance, and administrative services. Then we also have Claudia Gomez Perez, chief of student family and community services. Then we have Dr. Derek Little, chief of academics and school leadership. Then we have Mr. Martín Munoz, deputy chief of academics. Then we have Ms. Jamie Miller, chief of human capital and talent development. Then we have Dr. Angela González, deputy chief of human capital and talent development. They didn't even know each other before, and they match. Then I would really, really like to congratulate Ms. Myra Ramos for taking on this incredible role of executive director of early learning. I kept telling her, this one is near and dear to my heart. These are the babies. Then we have, and she can't be here with us tonight, but Ms. Annette Lozano, she is our principal, former principal, I'll just say, from Trevino Middle School, but she has taken the role of executive director of K-12 literacy and humanities. So we are super excited. This lady right here. I don't, should I tell them the story? Ms. Brenda Garcia, executive director of K-12 math and science, she has given me a run for her money since the day I got here. But she's brilliant and hardworking, and we're so excited to have her. Next. These are, right here, these three individuals will be our executive directors of school leadership, and they will be leading principal supervision, principal development, principal coaching. So I would like to introduce the community to Ms. Jody Adair, executive director of school leadership, network one. She'll be overseeing the La Jolla network of schools. Then we have Orlando Reyna, he's the executive director of school leadership, network two, what is Lincoln. He can't join us this evening. He's at camp with his son. And then we have Ms. Nidia Ortiz, executive director of school leadership, network three, the Palm View network of schools. She also is out of town with her family, but she is the former principal of JD Salinas. And so she could not also be here, but we are super excited to promote her to this position. We also have two more promotions from within the district. We have Ms. Melinda Flores. Is she here this evening? There she is. Ms. Melinda, please stand for one more second. She is the executive director of assessment, accountability, and school quality. She is going to take on a huge task of working side-by-side, shoulder-to-shoulder with myself and Dr. Little, to really, really study our district over and over and over again to make sure that what we're doing is working for kids. So thank you. And then we have our incredible Ms. Irma Zuniga. This is a promotion, a true promotion, as it should have been, to executive director of bilingual and migrant education, and I thank you for taking this on. And then we have some other overdue promotions. We have Mr. Aaron Lara. Where is Aaron? Aaron is, I met Aaron once. Right, Jaime's not talking to me anymore. He was over on the business side, and I said, I need his brain. And so he is the director of data quality. He will be working in the office with Melinda, but I really need his brain. He's brilliant, brilliant, brilliant. So I'm very excited to have him as the director of data quality. I am also very excited to have Steve, I call him Steve, and I swore, look at him, he's got a beard now. Where did that come from? Steve Leaños, director of energy management. I had to text him and say, is that you? He has a beard now. But thank you very much for taking this on for the district. It is no small job, and so I'm very excited to have you lead the district around energy management. We have some stuff to talk about immediately. And then, of course, our very own Blanca Cantu, director of public relations and external Thank you. And then lastly, but no small feat, we promoted three principals, and so then we had to replace three principals. And not that there's any replacement, of course, for the principal of Jimmy Carter, but we did. We found three principals. And so I would like to announce them to the community this evening. And one, two of our principals are here this evening. So Dr. Betty Carguñas is here with us, correct? Please stand. She is the new principal at Trevino Middle School, and we are so excited that she's joining us this evening. Luis Buchanegra could not join us this evening, but he will be the new principal, new principal, I'm sorry. The new principal at Jimmy Carter Early College High School. Claudia, you're gonna have to turn over the keys. And the new principal at JD Salinas Middle School is Mr. Leonel Peña. Please stand. And again, two of these are coming from within the district, and so we are super happy always to find an opportunity to lift up leaders from within the district. All right. So other celebrations, right? And I always just want to acknowledge how much has just been done within the past five months. We're turning a corner. We're adopting a new math curriculum, so Brenda's been a little busy. And so really wanna celebrate the implementation of a K-5 curriculum and a 6-8 curriculum. And so just some snapshots of our teachers truly already engaged. And so just some snapshots of our teachers truly already engaging, already engaging in professional learning and some really deep, meaningful professional learning. Also want to acknowledge dual-language program and professional learning that's been going on across the district already. The bilingual department has been leading. Had a parent meeting this morning to really educate our parents and help our parents understand the shift in the two-way model and what that means for them and their children, but also helping our teachers get ready for that and what that means moving forward. And then also, really, next slide, talking about in celebrating our teachers around handing out those checks. Ms. Myra has helped us do this as she transitions roles, but really making sure that the teacher incentive allotment program is up and thriving and that teachers are getting those checks for their hard work and for moving the needle on student achievement and for really demonstrating positive outcomes in student achievement, and it's showing up in the data. And it was my pleasure to hand those checks out to those teachers. Right, Myra? We were making jokes, like, where are we going on vacation? Because some of those checks were pretty big. And so I also want to just report out to the community that it was one of the things that I heard over and over and over again is that we were behind on TIA. And so we made a submission again for more teachers to be in next year's cohort. And so we are excited that we made incredible progress in such a short time. How many more did we put in? I don't even know. But it was incredible. And we held sessions and reported out to teachers how many more were submitted. And so we're excited for the progress and moving forward. But those checks to hand out was a lot of fun. It's the fun side of HR. And then also implementing new pre-K curriculum. And so we are excited to just dig into what early learning looks like so that moving forward, our third graders are reading on grade level, and they are bilingual, and they are ready to switch from that, you know, learning to read to reading to learn. And so that is what we have done in five months. We've worked really hard in five months. It seems crazy, right? But it has been an incredible pleasure. It has been my honor. And it has been a blast. Not every day. But it has been my pleasure, my honor, and we will continue to work very hard for you, with you, to serve you. And that is my report at my last board meeting of this school year. I have a few more announcements. We have job fairs coming because we have some vacancies. Not a ton, but some. We have job fairs coming. And this is for La Jolla ISD employees who need jobs. We will have an auxiliary and paraprofessional job fair on Wednesday, July 24th, from 4:00 to 7:00 at the La Jolla ISD Central Administration Building. Teachers will be on the 25th from 4:00 to 7:00. So please, and I know that our new Director of Public Relations and Communications will be advertising this over and over again, but we will also be communicating via email. Next. That's me just saying thank you. Thank you over and over and over again for your support, your kindness, your generosity, and most of all, your grace. It has not been an easy five months. It will not be easy moving forward. There's change coming. And we are here for you to support you through change. But I am so grateful to the board. I am so grateful to this board for your support every day, every moment. And I am grateful to this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sorenson. A round of applause for Dr. Sorenson and a great report. So at this time, I'd like to ask any of our board members if they have any remarks or comments they'd like to make.
I have a, Mr. President, well, not a question, just a comment.
Yes, Dr. Margot.
Would like to congratulate Dr. Sorenson on the hard work regards to the budget, your team, but also on the selection of your cabinet and executive team and others, other administrators, principals, et cetera. It seems to be a very well-qualified and talented group of individuals. So welcome to your positions. And I really want to congratulate you on the selection of a very talented cabinet and executive team, Dr. Sorenson.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Carlos Margot. Anyone else like to say anything? Secretary Peña?
I'm good. I think Dr. Carlos Margot did a really good job of just sharing our overall sentiments. So thank you so much, Dr. Sorenson, for fighting the good fight and putting in the hard work. These kids deserve it. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Okay, well, I'm going to go ahead and say something. So I couldn't get Dr. Sorenson from doing backflips this morning because she had a lot of exciting news, and I could see. Thank you for sharing the great news with us. For those of you that promoted within the district, congratulations to all of you. Well deserved. I congratulate all of those that are now promoted to principals, those that are now new cabinet members that are from the district. Congratulations to you. Your hard work was certainly noticed. And to those of you that are not from the rural Grandy Valley, welcome to South Texas. You couldn't have picked a better school district in the state or the country to work at. So congratulations to all of you. I do have one warning for you. You're probably going to gain a lot of weight, at least five or 10 pounds, because we all have. But we've enjoyed it. And we're going to take you to some of the best restaurants, and you're going to meet some of the nicest people from the La Jolla community. So congratulations to all of you that have joined us. We look forward to working with you. And Dr. Sorenson, you have certainly assembled a dream team. So congratulations to you and your staff.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? Seeing that we have none, the next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
Mr. President, before there's a motion, I'd like to state that I will abstain from one of the consent agenda items, which is 8.15. For the record, I'd like to abstain from that particular agenda consent item.
8.15. Statement from Dr. Margot that is noted. Thank you for letting us know. Anyone else? Seeing that we do not have one, do I have a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Those not? See that we have a majority. Motion carries. Consent items was the agenda item. Next thing on the agenda is that we are going to go into closed session under Section, the Texas Government Code, Section 551.001.
The time is 6:33 PM. We are back from closed session. It is 8:15 PM.
Action item number 11. Discussion of Approval of La Jolla ISD 2024-2025 Annual Budget. If we don't have any questions for Mr. Lopez, we can go ahead and proceed. No questions for Mr. Lopez? Crespo or Ms. Crespo, Dr. Crespo? Seeing that we do not have one, do I have a motion?
I'd like to move to approve item number 11.
Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda. Consider and take action to approve the non-renewal of employees on term contracts. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve item number 11.2.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Next item is 11.3. Consider and take action to approve the proposed termination of employees on term contracts. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve this item 11.3.
Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. The following item is 11.4. Consider action regarding Level 3 DGBA grievance filed by Dr. Ana Dalia Olivera. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve, to consider action regarding Level 3 DGBA grievance filed by Dr. Ana Dalia Olivera. We have stopped, looked, and listened, and we take no further action on this matter.
Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is item number 12, which is our calendar. Items 12.1 through 12.5. Central Administration Alternative, I mean, alternate summer working hours, May 27th through August 7th. Correction. May 27th through August 2nd, 2024, 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Thursday, Friday off. Central Administration offices will be closed for vacation July 1st through July 12th, 2024. July 31st, 2024, regular board meeting. August 14th, 2024, regular board meeting. August 28th, 2024, regular board meeting. School board members, at this time, do I have any remarks or comments?
No.
Mr. President, if I may, I just would like to say thank you to Dr. Sorenson for everything she's done. And also to just say thank you for that stipend for all the staff and personnel. I think that was amazing thing that you were able to accomplish, you know, considering all the financial situations we've had going on. I think that was amazing. I'm sure everyone is very happy about it. So just thank you for all the work. And, you know, we look forward to working with the new cabinet and, you know, going into the next year.
Thank you so much. And thank you very much to the board for passing the budget and allowing us as a staff to reward our amazing employees. So thank you to the board for approving that.
Thank you. Do we have any other remarks or comments from the board? I do have a closing statement that I'd like to make before we adjourn tonight. It is important for everyone to listen, and this is a message that we'd like to convey to all of those that are listening tonight or present. On behalf of the La Jolla ISD School Board, I want to express our firm support for our Superintendent, Dr. Sorenson, and her steadfast commitment to implementing new initiatives aimed at ensuring student success. Her visionary leadership and dedication to academic excellence are evident in the thoughtful decisions she has made, particularly regarding the selection and management of senior administrative positions. The La Jolla ISD Board firmly believes that our Superintendent is uniquely positioned to identify and appoint individuals who are best suited to fulfill these critical roles. Her choices are always made with the best interest of our students and community in mind. By entrusting her with this responsibility, we are confident that her expertise and insight will help elevate our district to the level of excellence it deserves. We stand united with our Superintendent in her efforts to advance the educational outcomes of our students. Her strategic initiatives and comprehensive understanding of our district's needs demonstrate her commitment to fostering an environment where every student thrives. As we move forward, the La Jolla ISD Board members will continue to support our Superintendent in all her endeavors. We have full faith in her leadership, her ability to guide our district towards a brighter future. Together, we are dedicated to ensuring that La Jolla ISD remains a beacon of academic excellence and a pillar of our community. Thank you for your continued leadership, Dr. Sorenson. On behalf of the school board, we put this together, and we just wanted to share this with our community, our staff, and of course, our students. So again, thank you for what you've done in the past couple of months. We are honored to be serving as school board members to the La Jolla ISD school.
Thank you very much, board. I appreciate everything that you've done, standing shoulder to shoulder with me as we've done this work. Thank you, President Alvarez, for your kind words. It has just begun. So I look forward to the hard work that we have ahead of us. I look forward to our service and our continued commitment to the community of La Jolla ISD. Thank you very much.
Dr. Sorenson, you're very welcome, and thank you for your comments. Board members, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn this meeting at 8:22 PM.
Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. 8:22 PM, meeting adjourned.